So at 7:04, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Rachel to lead us in the pledge, please. Rachel? You have to hook your business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
Welcome, everyone, and happy Martin Luther King Day. I will hear comments from the public on anything not on the agenda.
And you can sit closer if you'd like.
Yeah, we don't feel free to join us. Feel free to reach in for a snack. Any board acknowledgements?
I wanted to mention the choir concert from whatever night that was. Were you there?
No, it was postponed from...
Yeah, the Founder's Choir Concert was, I think, on Thursday night. And was, as always, amazing to see what Megan can do with that many children. The fact that roughly half of the girls in Founder's are in that choir. It's really cool.
That's very cool.
It's really cool. So, anyway, that was awesome.
And I thought you were thinking about the EMS Choir Concert is tomorrow night postponed from.
Oh, no.
Well, there's a second announcement. Tomorrow night at EMS Choir.
It's yet another opportunity. If you missed one...
There you go. And if choirs at EMS aren't your thing for tomorrow night, 6:30 at the high school will be an info session on the Regional Education District Study Committee. So it will provide more information on what that committee work looks like and answer any questions people have around that. And that's at the high school tomorrow at 6:30. It's warned as a board meeting for us, so I don't think we have a big official role in it, except to be available for questions. If you guys are available, it'd be great if you can come. I will definitely be there. So, do you know any more, Mark, about our official responsibilities?
No, I think we're there when we can to answer questions for interested people in attendance.
Where's it going to be at the high school?
Auditorium.
In the auditorium. And Brian O'Regan, who will be the consultant facilitating the work, will be there. He's done a few of these in his time, I think. And so his ability to answer the technical questions will be probably greater than the board members, but sort of perspective setting and why we're choosing to engage in the conversation now. And those questions are questions that might be directed to us, where the more technical questions, we need not fear that will not be ours to have to respond to. We will have an expert leading it, and he and Liz Subin will facilitate that meeting. She, they are to sort of begin setting the stage for the engagement part of the work that will happen in our community around communication.
And this meeting tomorrow night is for us and Essex Junction and Westford.
Yep.
It's like we're doing three of these.
All three boards will be there, and Brian O'Regan and Liz, and then hopefully anybody who's interested in considering whether or not this study work is for them, or just wanting to know more about it, even if that's not their thing. And people who can't attend tomorrow night but have questions can certainly shoot them through Mark or Judy or any of the board chairs as well. And we'll do our best on that. All right, I will, if we have no further announcements, I will take a motion on the consent agenda, which includes just the minutes.
I'll move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Great. Second?
I'll second.
Cash flow. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All this posed, passes five zero. Thanks. And then I will pass this to our able experts on this topic. Our budget discussion, Mark, will lead us through this next round. We left off with some questions around transportation last time around, how we might choose to allocate some of the expenses around the capital reserve and the capital reserve request. So it's an opportunity to expand on those conversations and let Mark and Roger lead us through that.
Hi, everybody. Different arrangement. Hello, 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 hello.
I know, it feels very far away.
Conor gets to see my full head of hair. Nice to see everybody. So Roger has been putting together, this is the third version of the budget that you'll see tonight, and it's not going to look much different than what you saw last Monday night. We'll call it up here on the screen in a moment. And also, the charge was to, looking at the three budget presentations we've done, is to glean from those presentations the slides that are most salient and the ones that are most accessible by taxpayers, ones that make the most sense, as a way to spring into a conversation later this evening about what next Monday night's presentation looks like. And when you're out and about between now and April, you know, what are the talking points that you want to hone based on, hopefully, this presentation giving you some information in that regard. As Kim mentioned, the board will have to make a decision tonight on the capital improvement fund. Roger will show several scenarios, and we reviewed all of those last Monday. But that's a decision that needs to be made. In terms of the bus fleet, our recommendation will continue to be that we reduce the fleet by three buses. Was not reported accurately, but that does not mean that we have to change the start and end time of the school day. It's something that I think, as a district, we should consider in the long term, but it will not prevent us from reducing the fleet for FY16.
You're saying we don't have to change the schedule?
No, and that wasn't clearly stated enough last Monday. It's something that we can talk about later tonight in the context, but it is not going to prevent us from making the decision to reduce three budgets, three buses. It won't have the full effect that we're hoping to achieve, but we can talk about that when the time is right. So I think that the flasher, the thing is working, Roger.
Okay.
You want to fire that up?
Sure. I need my glasses. Oh, I see. Whoop, that's not it.
Shall I toss them over? No.
Oh, that's not it. Ah, there we go. We'll let her go. Good evening, everyone.
I can see five.
So our third draft presentation this evening. Actually, Mark, it probably...
Is it on?
I bet.
Oh, oh, oh.
Listen, I don't know where you're pointing.
After that introduction, I'll continue to embarrass myself. I'm back to my question, though, Mr. Andrews. Where do I...
Yeah, point it to you, you might not be...
I guess the laptop is not working. Shouldn't have to be that direct, but...
Why don't I take the helm here? That'd be good.
Good start, Roger.
Our summary slide in the same format that you've seen it before. The budget, we'll look in a minute to see what's changed. Not much has changed. The total general fund budget, $21,618.89, almost $621,619. An increase of almost $801,000, which represents a 3.85 percent. Last week, we looked at a 4 percent increase. Reminder that the state homestead tax rate and the base funding per pupil is not yet set or finalized by the legislature. Those are the numbers that we've been advised to do tax calculations with this year. The tax rate increase, to make changes on your form, because I see this slide did not get updated since last week, the tax rate increase for budget only is 3.1 percent. The tax rate increase with the $125,000 capital reserve is 3.8.
Roger, can I just ask, that's just our part of it, right?
That's just our part. Correct, correct.
Thank you.
We'll look at the high school impact in a minute. Dave, after my second slide, am I continuing to do well? Changes to tonight's budget, compared to the numbers that we saw last week, we've determined that we needed to increase our allocation for legal services in the center part of the screen, $3,500. In continuing discussions with our transportation contractors, the two most viable bidders in our RFP, there have been additional cost decreases, so that results in the savings of $25,022. And lastly, going forward on the assumption that we'd be reducing three buses, I factored in some fuel savings, too. So the... Top button. Boy, nothing seems to be working here, huh? So total decrease to the budget, as opposed to last week, of $31,552. Again, then comparing this current draft without a provision for a capital reserve to the FY15 budget with a reserve, our increase is $800,000, 808.38. An increase, I carried it out to the additional decimal point, so you can see that it's not rounded down. If we say 3.8 percent, technically, it meets that, or 3.85. Similar slide again to last week. The information on the top repeats in blue what you saw on the previous slide, the 3.8 percent increase. The yellow section shows that same draft budget, but if we deleted the $80,000 that we spoke of for special operation and maintenance projects next year, if the budget did not include those, the percent increase FY15 to FY16 would be just 3.5 percent. Last section compares the FY15 budget, the entire draft budget, plus an allocation of $125,000 to the capital reserve. That would result in a year-to-year budget increase of 4.4 percent. Okay?
And that last set, has the $80,000 rolled back into the budget?
Correct. Yep, yep. The entire draft budget, including the $80,000, yes. Other good questions on that? Please. Just wanted to provide a quick summary of some of these most important numbers, comparing just the proposed budget to the current FY15 budget. So on the top line, you'll see the budget FY15 of 20.8 million and the proposed budget of 21.6 million. For FY15, our budget was a 2.5 percent increase. Again, the proposed budget without reserve, 3.85 percent. With reserve, 4.45. Tax increases for just Essex Town, we'll look in a few minutes, factoring in also high school changes. But in the proposed budget, the tax rate increase per $100,000 of assessed value would be 2970. The budget without capital reserve, 3680, if the reserve is included. So a 3.1 or a 3.8 percent increase, as opposed to the increase for the current year of 8.2 percent. Per pupil spending is also a fact that we like to closely watch, this year's per pupil spending. Remember, per pupil spending is the money that we require from the education fund divided by our equalized pupil count. This year's spending per pupil was 13,717, which was $292 below the final statewide average for Vermont for this current year. The proposed numbers, 14052 without the capital reserve, 14153. The numbers below those in the shaded area show how much those budgets would be over the current year average. We do not know yet what the FY16 average is. And then one other reminder, every $170,000 increase in the budget affects taxes, raises taxes by 1 percent. All set so far? Good. Thought this might be helpful. This is four times now that we've looked at various drafts of the budget. First, the rollover, and then tonight, we're on the third draft. So I thought I would just quickly summarize the amount that we looked at in each of those budgets, the total amount, the change from draft to draft. On the line for the rollover budget, we knew that was almost $750,000 higher than the FY15 budget. And on the highlighted line for third draft, again, we know that tonight, the budget we're looking at is about $50,000, $51,000 higher than that rollover was, total of $800,839 above the FY15 budget. With the other drafts, we've looked at changes draft to draft and some of the numbers for program investments and so forth. What I've done here in the program investments included in this proposed budget, basically that compares the funding in the FY15 budget to the proposed FY16 budget. It's not, the numbers aren't going to be the same as your slides from previous weeks on the draft-to-draft changes. But going through those, and you might wish to talk on this slide a bit, Mr. Andrews.
We spent some time last Monday night talking about why the new investments are important, but Roger's identified the only additional line tonight is legal services. And I felt it was prudent to put a little bit more money in that, given the dynamic landscape that exists with health care and our labor agreements with educators and support staff. And it also may open a door for us to do some of that work with Chittin Central next fall, as their collective bargaining agreement comes up as well to discuss. So it seemed advisable to increase that line by a little bit. But other than that, unless the board has questions about those decisions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Other than legal services, this is basically the same numbers you showed us last week.
The same list. Again, the numbers are changing. For example, universal pre-K, in the rollover budget, you saw a larger increase, and then we've reduced that, I believe, in the second draft budget. So now this $111,000 is the net change from this year's budget to the final draft proposed budget. So that nets composed of two factors. First of all, our support per student is increasing from $2,000 to $3,000. And also, we're budgeting or assuming that 20 additional students will avail themselves or their families will to the universal pre-K program.
And that's a reminder of how many we would have done if we were seeking to fully fund it, which we are not required to do this year.
Well, we've jumped into the 166 pool with both feet. And our initial estimates were we'd probably welcome 40 more families, but we felt that over, looking at trends over the last few years, we felt that 20 was a better assumption. If 25 families decided to access 10 hours of preschool and we only have 20 budgeted, we would be up for paying another $15,000.
Okay.
It's kind of, until we get some longitudinal data, it's hard to get a sense of it. About 60-70 percent of our families access that service.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
The final to school cost support, is that a required program? $10,000?
No. It's, I don't see it so much as a program, as much as it is reallocating existing services to help us to augment the... Right now, the food services budget stands alone. It's not part of the general budget, as you know. So based on our current program needs, I felt that the general budget needed to augment that program by about $10,000. It provides us greater access to local foods, which otherwise, we have a hard time accessing because of the costs.
Are the local foods more expensive than what we would get through other more conventional sources?
In some cases, yeah.
So what would be the total cost differential by going to locally produced stuff? Any idea?
Yeah, I don't think we could make that full transition, because I think it would be prohibitive. But there are, and again, we're just exploring the opportunities. So we work with two local growers exclusively, Mazza's and Chapin's. And so this allows us to maintain other contracts that we only do seasonally. So the creamery up in the Northeast Kingdom, for instance, is yogurt that we have found to be good yogurt. We want to be able to provide more of that as an example to our kids.
Yes? Maybe you need to hit the bottom ones, or are you guys clear on what we have to address?
This total budget by state-required function codes is updated for the third draft numbers. Total budget, again, is in agreement with our numbers on the previous slides, as is the dollar change in the budget and the percent change. We discussed some of these changes last week. Certainly, a smaller dollar amount in a function code that has a much smaller number to begin with results in a larger percentage change for that particular area. One such change would be guidance. I think a quick look would show that that's the highest percentage change budget to budget. And we discussed that reason, the FTE increase at Founder's from 1.5 to 1.8. These, the next two slides are a direct repeat from last week, showing the change in our debt payment from FY14 to 15 to 16, $105,000 reduction in the coming year. And per our discussions last week, and for this evening, we're showing a proposed capital reserve allocation, if approved by the voters, at the same amount that it was this year, $125,000. So the district's total expenditure for capital purposes will be decreasing a bit in FY16. Okay?
That's good.
In the debt slide that we have looked at previously, again, indicates the changing amounts going forward for our debt and the fact that in just two short years, as we're planning the FY18 budget, that we'll see a $300,000 drop in our debt service payments. Okay, with that?
Curious why, you know, there's obviously a trend line down with that big step-off in 2018. Why does it bounce back up in 2020 and 21? I mean, it's a relatively minor bounce back up, but I'm just curious. Are there balloon payments, or?
No, not balloon payments, but a good question. The Vermont Bond Bank has refinanced some of our debt, and so credits are began being applied. Oops.
Hey, we have no debt.
That's one way to get rid of it.
Credits began being applied this year. Remember, we've talked about that, that we didn't, that some of the credits applied this year were, the district just became aware of this year. They were actually done in 2006, arranged for in 2006, 2007, but they weren't in our files. And then a couple of years ago, other debt was refinanced. So the credit on those two debt issues is applicable through 2019. And then the credit goes away at that point, so thus, the increase from 19 to 20. Comparison of the proposed budget to the five prior years, the last, oops, the last two columns show our proposed budget with and without the $125,000 allocation for the capital reserve. Think the important point from this slide is the bottom line, how the budget has changed in the past five years. In FY11, we reduced our budget by a very large amount, 3 percent. See the other changes, certainly the statement under these figures, that over five years, our budget increased from FY11 to FY15 has averaged 1.6 percent. So total increase from FY11 to FY15 was 8 percent. But again, dividing that by the five years, an average increase of 1.6 percent per year. Reality of our budget planning is that we need to be cognizant of the effect that our budget planning will have on the tax rate. This slide gives more of the data that we were, earlier, we were looking, that the budget without a capital reserve allocation, a 3.11 percent increase for our schools, Essex Town School District. When adding in the Union High School budget, the total result would be a projected increase of 3.71 percent. So that would change the taxpayers' bill per $100,000 of assessed value by $55.90. The line below that shows the total bill.
How solid are we on that high school number? Have they set a budget? Are they working, are they about the same pace as we are?
I think they're a bit further than we are. That was the number as of last week, midweeks, unless there's been any, and their meetings have concluded, as best I know.
Okay, so you're fairly confident that's, if not exact, that's pretty close.
Right.
Okay.
So similar to our information on the budget, statements at the bottom of the page make summary comments for the previous five years, that the Essex Town tax rate change average year-to-year from FY11 to FY15 was 2.5 percent. And actually, when factoring in the blending with the high school, that average goes down a tad to 2.2 percent. So, five-year tax history. Questions on that? The chart that we, uh, first displayed in our publications last year for factors affecting our, our tax rate, we've looked at that, uh, in some of our earlier drafts of the budget, I've plugged in the, uh, the final numbers, uh, I think if you skipped to the statement that I made at the bottom of the page, that the, uh, that this analysis of factors has changed drastically from last year. Last year, the numbers shown in the green-shaded column, uh, some five percent of our budget, the district had no control over. We were losing non-tax revenue, then usual changes in pupil count, common level of appraisal, and then a much larger-than-usual change in the homestead tax rate, all combined to increase our tax rate four-point-nine percent, almost five percent, before we, uh, did any budget planning for the new year at all. So in comparison in FY sixteen, rather than a revenue, a non-tax revenue decrease, we're enjoying a non-tax revenue increase. The, uh, the factors of pupil count and CLA have their usual minimal impact, but not causing a great impact, and then the state, uh, tax rate increase is so much lower than the previous year, that, that if we were able to, in FY sixteen, level fund the FY fifteen budget into sixteen, not increase it at all, our tax rate would go down by almost one-point-seven percent. Knowing that we need to increase the budget to keep up with certain expenses, certain fixed costs, then the, uh, are asking the voters for the additional approval of eight hundred, almost eight hundred, one thousand dollars in the budget, causes the taxes to go up. So, far different, uh, presentation than last year. All set with that?
Certainly started in a happier position this time.
Yes. Spending per pupil, and we saw the summary version of that at the beginning of the presentation, this shows our spending per pupil going back just FY thirteen, a three-year look-back, the numbers have changed, uh, a bit tonight compared to previous drafts, but if the FY sixteen budget as proposed went forward, our spending per equalized pupil would be fourteen thousand and fifty-two dollars, which is forty-three dollars greater than last year's actual spending per pupil through, throughout the state by all school districts. With the capital reserve added, that increases that spending per pupil by one hundred and one dollars. So, we're, we're, uh, likely to be below the statewide average in FY sixteen, because we're hardly above it in FY, or, we're hardly above the FY fifteen average in FY sixteen, and we continue to be well below the penalty threshold.
Roger, this is not necessarily specific to this budget conversation, so if the answer is way long, we can skip it, but when you hear that Vermont's average per pupil spending is eighteen thousand something, something, um, that isn't in line with what we see here as Vermont average spending per equalized people, so, you know, often, the number you hear quoted is much higher than the fourteen thousand when it's being compared to other states. I just didn't know if there's something obvious that's impacting it, there's a quick explanation.
I haven't seen those quotations, but my assumption would be that that would divide our total district budget by number of pupils to get an eighteen thousand dollar figure, because remember, the, the spending per pupil that is the source of comparisons and possible tax penalty in Vermont takes the amount of our, our revenue from the State Education Fund and divides that by the equalized pupil, so it is, it is a lower number than the entire budget.
There's also, I think it's an average, so there are, in some districts, it's a, it's over twenty thousand dollars per student, in some, it's, it's less than the state average, so I think, I think that's an, that eighteen is an average, an average number, but...
But I, I think you are definitely on to something, because other states that don't have State Education Fund revenue and equalized pupils, it would, they would most likely be dividing their total budget by the total number of children enrolled.
And I wasn't intending to confuse the matter for this conversation, I just, you know.
I think the talking point is it's, we're below state average.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we continue to be, obviously, way below the penalty average, the penal, not penalty average, the penalty threshold.
Yeah.
We continue to be well below that, which is good.
When we look at equalized pupils, the number of the pre-K through eight is going up, and is that primarily because of the increase in the pre-K?
Mm-hmm.
And they're counted, what, partial, right?
Point four-eight.
Point four-six.
Part of a child, part child. Four-six.
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
So that was, that was a strategic point, uh, on our part, was to, it's, it's what's best for kids' development, but also, it's, it's, um, it had a neutral impact on taxes.
Thank you.
All set? While continuing to talk about Education Fund, the slide updates numbers that we've previously looked at, from our twenty-one-point-whatever-million-dollar proposed budget, seventeen-point-two million, will be funded from the State Education Fund, which in our case, uh, that amount of money coming into our district, uh, is received approximately sixty percent from local taxpayers and forty percent from, uh, from other sources statewide. We, we receive, uh, more money than, than is collected by our residents. The year-to-year change for our draw from the Education Fund in the proposed budget is two-point-three percent. The state has, has indicated that they estimate that the average increase for all districts will be three-point-one percent, so we're eight-tenths of a percent below that, that average. You'll see that our draw, based as a percentage increase in the Education Fund, is half of what it was last year, when unfortunately, our, our requirement here in our district was over the statewide, uh, average increase. The previous year, FY fourteen, the money that we needed as a percent increase was lower than the state average, and just the opposite of that the year before. But again, even with, including one hundred twenty-five thousand dollar capital reserve, we would be, uh, at or slightly below the presumed statewide average increase. Same five-year comparison, our increase over the five-year period of time averaged one-point-four percent, which we have done our best to keep at a minimum level.
That's why there's, it's a constant lament, uh, with school boards, that it's an oxymoron to think that we can do long-term budget planning in, as school boards, because there's so many variables that impact on taxes, it's hard to, one year looks different than the rest, given all the variables that are, um, we don't really have a whole lot of control over.
Set with this slide? So, summary of our revenue, then, we've already talked about the, uh, State Education Fund, we looked at the detail in previous meetings of our local revenue, that's down a minimal, minimal amount next year, projected to be a reduction of five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. We know that our fund balance is, is less, uh, for next year's budget. State revenue, our special education and transportation reimbursements, again, to remind the board, the, uh, we've, uh, altered the anticipated special ed reimbursement based on our reduction in the service plan amount for five paraeducators, uh, and we've adjusted, uh, federal revenue upward, uh, to take into account money that will be carried forward from this year to next. So, total budget, total revenue budget must equal the total expenditure budget, and miraculously, it does, twenty-one-point-six million, increase of almost eight hundred and one thousand. Questions on any of the information we've looked at?
I'm assuming, I'm, I'm aware of the assumption, this question, you're going to punt down the road at least a few minutes, getting into the more specific of the transportation and stuff like that. Okay, I will, nothing.
We will have another question.
Yeah, sure.
Anybody else have any questions? Any folks joining us, any questions, um, or thoughts?
Were you saying you were going to talk about transportation fees after, is that what?
Yeah, in, in slightly more detail, it's not, not as part of...
Just more perspective, or maybe we...
Anecdotally, yeah.
Yeah. So that would, so is that best now, Mark, or actually?
I defer to the board, you know, I mean, if... I'm just wondering, before we go there, um, this also was a, um, a presentation we thought about in terms of its utility next Monday night, and I'm wondering if there's, are there any slides, and maybe we can come back to this question, but is this too dense? Do we want to, you know, are there slides here that really work for the board in terms of its presentation to the community, or, um, too much, too little, just right? Want to come back to that?
Do you guys have any initial thoughts on that?
My, my thought on that, and not on any specific, oh, on slide seven or whatever, but a, a concept or a concern that we've always talked about, we've talked about this seven times, eight times. You, R S D and Public, have seen this once, and you're probably going, where did these numbers come from? We've been talking about them for a long time, so I wanted, I just, I don't know if there are, um, I think we just need to be very cognizant of that when we're presenting this as a, here it is, budget, that it's very understandable.
I think...
Not just people who've seen it seven times, eight times, since...
Dan, can I get some feedback on that?
Yes, please.
As someone who's been here for a couple of the meetings, um, I think it would be helpful for you to have something that shows everything that's been added and everything that's been taken away. It sounds like this is the third version of this, so if someone wasn't here last week, they might not have seen an addition from last week, and if someone wasn't here in December, then they wouldn't have seen the additions from there. I just think as a parent, what I would like to see is sort of the whole scope of what's being added to the budget and what's being taken away. I'm sure everything that Roger just presented is really important, but from a kid's standpoint, that just seems a little, a little out there.
Yeah, and so, slide, having these slides six, how the figures have changed during the budget planning for FY sixteen, you've got all the things we've added in, taken out, it sounds like, uh, that, um, may be a very valuable thing, because, yeah, that, that makes sense, from a, I'm thinking from a parent's point of view, okay, are we losing something, are we gaining something from the parent's point of view? I think that's...
Any other thoughts, you guys?
I like that, that's good.
Thank you. I was, I was thinking that's here on the slide, but it's in there tight with, um, some, there's a lot of numbers, so I, I think part of what we got, um, in the very first round of the expense side of the picture, um, had context, and so we may want to, and I'm not probably, um, able to tell you right this second, but maybe if we were willing to take a look at draft one, where we set the context on the expenses and sort of the guiding principles of the budgeting process, some of those color slides that I think are not insignificant, but set the stage, I think class-sized slides probably need to be a part of what we will ultimately do. And so, those were well-done in that first draft presentation that we got, I don't recall that being rollover, I think that was our first draft, I went back and looked myself to see, and, you know, that's the side that people are going to be most interested in. The rest of this is really important, and it shows the ultimate impact on, you know, our revenue, our revenue picture shows the impact on ultimately our increases in our taxes, and gets very, very dense, is really, really important for those of us who've been studying this for six months, but the part that's going to be, I think, most interesting is the stuff that we had in draft one, which looked at the expenses, if I remember.
For me personally, the, I think the most valuable single piece, as much as I love math, but still, the most valuable single piece was, you know, Mark, you kind of going through and saying, you know, we're going to do this to our, you know, your math intervention that's at FMS, and this is why. Great, okay, now I understand that line, I understand why we're doing that. That, that was very helpful to me. I would guess that would be helpful to... Well, again, and this is not a public engagement evening, this is, that's next Monday, I mean, their input's really important, so this was sort of like road-testing something, and so your feedback's important, we have all the information, I think, that you think would enhance the presentation, it's just identifying what's... Yeah. Where we've been for three versions, more narrative on positions that are new investments, all of that is easily come by. Perfect.
I think that makes sense.
I think part of that can also be summed up in that next slide, the comparison in FY sixteen by the line item budget, where it's just that context of regular education, special education, and that would also allow for a chance to identify, to me, it just helps clarify where things move around in the budget, too.
Yeah. Any other thoughts, you guys, or?
I have a question related to transportation.
Sure.
Um, Mark, you, um, there was a small increase in legal fees, and I know it's a minuscule amount of the whole budget.
Thirty-five hundred dollars, yeah.
Could you clarify the need for that one more time?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, um, we, we have substantially reduced the legal line in the budget in the last four years, because we've not relied as much on legal services that we, as we have in the past, and that's a good thing, it's always nice to have legal services there, because we have to access it occasionally during the year. And primarily, that reduction came through, um, negotiating with support staff and teachers without attorney assistance, and I think that we've been quite successful in that, in that venture. That said, uh, healthcare is a very, is very dynamic right now in Vermont, and beyond, I think, the capacity of the superintendent, and I can't speak for the board, but the ability to really understand some of the variables within the healthcare, um, arena, so, um, I think it's prudent to put some more money in that line in the event that we have to access, um, legal services to help us, along with teachers, think about what our options are.
Okay, because I thought I heard you when you initially just, um, were talking about that, making reference to something about CCSU.
I did. So, um, they too, um, will be talking about that next fall, um, and it just seems that it might be prudent, given the direction that the boards might be taking, to have conversations with colleagues in our sister district. And that's, that's a, that's, that's a, um, something I was just thinking about, it's not, regardless of that work, we still need to enhance that line.
Okay, because I wasn't sure if it had something to do with the, um, study of...
Oh, no, no.
No, not at all.
Just trying to look ahead.
Because I knew that was, even if that was something that was going to happen, it was yours down the road, so I...
No, and that is really, really did, um...
No, it was just, again, it was prudent to do that.
Okay.
We've, um, like Mark said, not had to have the lawyers sitting at the table for negotiations, and I think it, um, is negotiated a little differently, um, through CCSU, and we both happen to have contracts that could be up next year, and we will all be facing, um, how to collaborate to figure out healthcare in the context of contracts, that's just going to be a reality in what's going on in the environment, so we, that was really our thinking, that it could be that we're going to need more help next year than we've needed in the past.
General fund budget will not be funding the consolidation study.
Yeah, that money comes from elsewhere.
Yep. Um, and my second question, um, last week, Mark, there was a, I want to say it was about a hundred and twenty thousand that you added back in, because the district was anticipating more teachers retiring than actually did. Has the district thought about offering a career incentive? With this year being the year where teachers who have enough years can access, you know, full benefits from the state, that it might be a time where other teachers might take the opportunity if there was an incentive for them? And while it may cost the district some out-of-pocket... And while it may cost the district some out of pocket, certainly this year and then for years to come, it would save money.
So the, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe, that we, one of our planning assumptions was we had X number of teachers retire, and that didn't come to fruition. It's just one of those assumptions. And to answer your second question, no, we did not consider that this year.
We have it, Tony.
We have it.
But not this year.
Any other questions? All right. I don't think on the agenda there's another spot that is speaking directly to transportation, is there? Let me pull up the agenda. Where's my agenda? Yeah, we, we have it captured under here, so I think now would be the time to give these guys some direction on the capital reserve and to get a little more expansion on the bus fleet reduction. Because I think we had a common misunderstanding that the reduction of three buses was gonna necessitate a start or end time change that could potentially impact two-thirds of our kids. So we definitely, I think collectively, had a bit of a reaction to that. And it would, I think, warrant a little more explanation just to understand our misconception. And what the transportation piece, as it highlighted our conversation last week, it sounds like there's been some progress in moving what we expected our estimate to be down a little bit as it was adjusted there. So I think because the capital reserve, let's hear, if you guys are okay with it, and even though it was number three, I'd like to make it number two, and then talk about the capital reserve, so that we'll have full information before we determine where we're going with that.
So why don't I provide some information? I'm not prepared to do a full report because I don't think that that's necessary at this point. I think we mentioned last week that transportation is an important service for a good percentage of our kids in K eight and less the case at the high school level. We also know that the bus transportation schedule pretty much is a major driver, no pun intended, in terms of how we, how we run our school day. It's just one of those, one of those things. So we have been working with First Student, who is our current contractor, over the last couple of years, trying to put, make, make changes to the routing system to make it efficient for our ridership. Everything from bus stops to routing, you know, actually where buses, what roads they go down. And we've made some progress, but not to the degree that we felt was required. And one of the things that has been a real unfortunate part of the current routing system is that a number of our, a good percentage of our kids have to wait after school for, for a length of time before their bus shows up. And that's be, it's uncomfortable for kids, especially kids who are all dressed up in snow outfits needing to get on their bus. And buses were not in some cases getting to the schoolhouse until quarter four in the afternoon, which is a long time for kids to wait. So we also, we know that through the, the analysis we did, we contracted with the folks who we purchased software from, who are outside of, they're out of Schenectady, New York, so don't have any skin in the game in terms of, they just have software that allows us them to look objectively at what are the inefficiencies in our system. Through their analysis, they believe that we could reduce the current fleet by three buses, which you saw on the screen when you add diesel, and the, the expected thirty-five percent increase in bus services next year, which we have, you know, to control over that process. That's the lowest bid that we got was a thirty-five percent increase. With that increase, plus a reduction in three buses, plus diesel, we're only seeing a savings of about thirty-five thousand dollars. So we can go ahead with that reduction, and that was the miss, the miscommunication last week. The value-added piece to the analysis was if we could have an hour of time between the high school run and middle school run and our K five runs, meaning the start of the school day and the end of the school day changed, and there was an hour differential, we would ostensibly eliminate the wait time both at the Founder's Memorial School and the elementary school.
So we would not eliminate another bus, we would just make it even that much more efficient?
There'd still be the three buses are eliminated, but if the start and end times were changed by, allow that differential, which you saw last week in a very general way, a twenty-five to thirty-minute change in the morning, that would, that would eliminate that, the need for kids to, to wait. We've, we've made some improvements over the last, you know, year. I mean, kids are not waiting now till quarter four, now at the latest it's twenty-four or three thirty-five. But there's still, you know, the concern that, that their kids are waiting. So, you know, we started talking about the what-if. We had no intention of, you know, obviously unilaterally just making changes without engaging the parent community because it is a big, a big change that would take a lot of adjustment perhaps on, on a good percentage of our families. So it would be not advisable at all to, to move forward in that manner. We also learned over the last couple of weeks that if we chose to go down this road, that we have ample time to study the question by engaging parents in the conversation, the hypotheticals, the what-ifs, to get a read on where, where families are and the disruptions that might cause. Initially, we thought that we had to have routes done, you know, by now to be planning those adjustments for next year, but we have an extended period of time if that's the route we, we want to go down. There's also other enhancements when you think about that, you know, the inconvenience to parents, which is the primary factor in making this decision, notwithstanding. There are other things that you start to think about in terms of what would a later start do for young children. And there are, there are several, but I'll just highlight for you this evening that, that I think are, are interesting to consider. The first is if, if, you know, we went down this road, we would have to have a before-school, there'd have to be a before-school option for children and families because quite frankly, some families just have to go to work and they just can't make that happen. So in contracting with the Y, we would, we would create before-school opportunities for kids in K five to be engaged in something meaningful, not just warehousing kids in the cafeteria, but looking at opportunities for kids to have that thirty minutes of something that was meaningful to them. And that's, that would be something that we, we feel we could create if, if we went down this, this road.
Can I ask you?
Yep.
Mark, is that something that would be a cost borne by the district or an expense borne by parents?
It would be universally accessed, so it would be, currently, we work with the Y, it's a great organization. We, we, there's, they pay to use our buildings this year, if you recall. And so it's a way of re, perhaps could reinvest that revenue source that we're already getting from the Y in that type of care. We also have parent educators who we're paying for to, to supervise kids after school. So ostensibly, if you lose the, the need to supervise people in the afternoon, you might be able to reinvest that time in the morning using parent educators. So we would hope it would be, it would be, it would have to be cost neutral for families.
For families.
Okay, yep. The obvious jump out, fewer buses, fewer, fewer carbon emissions, fewer personnel that, that we have to oversee, although they're not our employees, the more personnel, the more of a management issue it is. We have two buses that require the assistance of an assistant to get up at, before dawn to ride the bus for kids with disabilities. It's a very hard position. It's a hard job and it's a hard position to fill, and there's oftentimes, there's only one person who does it, and we cannot get people to fill that position. So having a later start, I think it would be maybe a more attractive position for people to, to ride that bus than not getting up at five in the morning. Later times, we have a lot of kids who are picked up in pitch black when it's cold. And so a later time, they'd be lighter and potentially safer. It would eliminate all transfers of high school and middle school kids. Right now, there's transfers from one bus to another with those that are away time, it would, it would eliminate all the transfers.
Question mark.
Yeah.
Would the pickup times for the high school be modified if you were to change the elementary?
High school remains high school, the start and end times do not change, yeah.
Can I ask that, because the other morning I see a bus on the road at twenty minutes after six.
Yeah.
Two miles from the garage.
Pickup times, the ti, and the time that the bus leaves the garage might in fact be more positively changed with the, with the new routes, but, but the start time for the school.
But not for the first.
Oh, for the first, too. Because they won't be the exact same routes.
Okay.
And, and, and one goal of the rerouting is for those students that have the, the longest rides on a bus now, that we would be trying to shorten those times.
The high schools, there's, they're, it's a, you know, what they're trying to deal with the men's kids, students that they're serving, it's, it's just, it's just, it's a complicated issue, as I think we said last night. You know, I think that we can continue to have that conversation with our high school colleagues, but quite frankly, the whole system has to change at once. I think if we, we could tweak around the edge, but we know the research is clear that teenagers should be going to school later, not earlier. So we have it kind of reversed in this district. But we also know that parents wouldn't want their five-year-old work, you know, going to school with a senior in high school. So I mean, I, you know, that's the way this, I think the schedule has evolved over time. But in order to really affect, I think what's best for kids is that we'd have to throw all K, pre-K twelve in the, in the, in the can and look at it together. Because right now.
You'd have to have buses to do that.
Well, potentially, and I think that the Red Study Committee probably will take this on in terms of, you know, what are, what is plausible, given the system that, that might exist if we, if we combine. So quickly, the last two things, again, these are just value-added pieces that you start to think about, is that we do have kids who walk into school house not having had breakfast. And so in that thirty-minute window before school time, you know, there would be universal access for breakfast, I think, which is a good thing for kids. And finally, the other opportunity that would avail itself is that we wouldn't have staff meetings at the end of the day, we'd have a staff meeting at the beginning of the day. I think it's tough for, for educators and school leaders to work all day and then come together and be together for an hour and, and be productive. So conceivably, we could switch that model and work as a professional learning community when our, when every light is on, so to speak. So I wanted to lay for the board and those in attendance that should we go forward, there'll be certainly a, a very, I think, comprehensive way of engaging families, parents in particular, with their views of this, as well as staff. And I think we have some time to do that, but I, the budget needs to go forward. The efficiencies that we would find, that I just described, would not be there without changing that start and stop time because you need that sixty minutes. But I do think it's something to continue to, to explore the possibilities. So just in quick summary, so there are really two issues. Do we reduce the three buses? Do we change the schedule? One does not, obviously, the, the buses are not contingent on the, the schedule change. And if I recall from our discussion last week, our, really our sole concern was that change of schedule. The ones who thought, oh, if we do the three buses, we have to change the schedule. If we take that concern off the table, I'm, don't mean to speak for the five of us, but that was the only really concern that I remember us having, unless there were other.
But certainly that was, from my perspective, the budget-related concern. I didn't feel as though the, the changing start and end time for two-thirds of our students and families being a hinging factor on this budget and those three buses reducing, that we were in a position to be prepared on the budget if, if that was required for the three bus reduction. What I'm hearing you guys say is that the routing is such that you can reduce the three buses, and still it's not the most desirable situation in the world that we have kids that are waiting, and that's happening now. So this doesn't, the reduction of the three buses doesn't really impact the fact that we have, from somebody looking at it externally, you know, a pretty undesirable situation in that kids and buses are going across that intersection and getting to and from and can't possibly happen simultaneously. And so some kids are waiting a long time in different places. And so there would be things we might be able to do better in a different scenario. But, but that is not related to whether or not we reduce the three buses. That situation doesn't get any worse necessarily than its current not ideal situation. Is that correct?
Well, we don't, we don't know that for a fact. Our, our goal is to not to make it any worse, and may, maybe we'll see even more efficiencies. But we haven't engaged the, the company to do the, do the system yet. It also would require some adjustments for bus stops. You know, we're committed to making sure that, that pretty much door-to-door, mailbox-to-mailbox, kids in K two are delivered. And that could be stopping every fifty feet, I'm being a little dramatic. But if you ever followed a school bus, that happens K eight. And, you know, the national standard is every five hundred yards, and we're stopping way within five hundred feet in many cases. So, you know, that is something that we would have to seriously address. And I think there are some inefficiencies when you look at a minute and a half of each stop theoretically. You know, that adds up exponentially. And so with a three bus reduction, there are going to be some customers who feel that, you know, they're being, you know, it's always been at the mailbox, why can't it be, why can't it be at this mailbox now? So that, you know, I'm prepared to, to have to, to deal with that.
Two questions.
And I assume communicate.
Well, we'll be communicating, we'll have that in advance, yeah.
Is any of this three bus reduction tied to making students walk to school?
No.
Okay, secondly, I have a concern about your statement about stopping every fifty feet. If we're stopping every fifty feet on Route fifteen, I thoroughly support that. If we're stopping every fifty feet through a development, you're a hundred percent right.
So I think I said I'm being dramatic.
I realize that you are.
But there are criteria in your policy that's really clear, and, and routes are established and bus stops are established based on number one, the safety of children. So, you know, I think that we have the capacity through the software and through good, our staff who know these routes very well, that we know where the safe parts of town are and where it's more value, more, the traffic's more heavy.
Common sense.
So absolutely, we're not going to be, you know, thoughtless about how we make those decisions. But I just don't bring it up, I only bring it up because we will, that's part of the, that's part of the mix. But Kim, getting back to your question, you know, we have to, we have to do that analysis.
Domain traveler.
To figure that, to figure that out. The goal is not to have it any longer than it already is.
Quick question on this, this software. Is this something that we purchased and will have in the future? Or is this something that we said, hey, come look at this once for us, you, company from Schenectady or wherever it was, I'm sorry?
You got that, yeah.
I did, all right. Did we just say, hey, come and take, is this a one-time shot? They're gonna say, here's what you should do instead, and then walk away? Or is this a service they're gonna look at it each year?
No, we purchased the software and we've been using other features of it this school year and will continue to own the software. There is a, an annual maintenance fee, but, but the, their involvement in, in possibly rerouting our district is a, is an additional service that we've requested.
Okay, so they'll keep doing that as, if we suddenly had sixty-eight kindergartners move into, you know, your neighborhood and nobody in my neighborhood, they would be able to look at that and reroute our buses for the following year differently.
It's pretty slick.
That's cool.
No, in addition to that, yeah. It's historic that after the first few days of school, the bus schedule has been changed in essence. Speaking from my past experience.
So that's a brief summary.
Yeah, Sarah.
I was just curious, and I don't know if there is a policy around how long we want kids to be on the bus. I know this year my children's bus was rerouted and they combined two buses. And my kids now get home a half hour later than they did previously. So my six-year-old is home an hour and twenty minutes after school's dismissed. So I'm just curious if that's gonna have a huge impact, or use three, how that's gonna work.
The, the goal is not, it's not in policy, Sarah, but the goal is to, is to keep it to sixty minutes.
From the time school gets out or on the bus? Because sometimes, you know, she sits in school for a while.
I, I think while the bus is, I'm on the bus and now I'm heading home, it's, it should be sixty minutes. Now, are we hard and fast on that? My guess is probably not all cases, but I think the, we're, we're hopeful that through this efficiency, this rat, which is mu, much more sophisticated than what we've done in the past, where we're just crossing out kids' name and looking at clocks on the wall, we're hopeful for a better system. It's also based on ridership of fifty, fifty students, you know, two to a seat. Do I have that right, yeah? Well, it's sixty, but what this analysis has done on a ridership of fifty, so. You know, that's probably one of the more common things we hear, and it's just, again, you tweak it here and it affects, I mean, that's, that's sort of the, that's sort of the problem we have. But we're hopeful that even with the reduction, that we won't see that happen.
We're, we're, okay, ask questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just curious about, you know, there's, you know, the street over here, Foster Road, there's kids that live here. Are these areas that are so close also, I mean, serviced by a bus? I'm wondering if, you know, could we eliminate a bus by having like a walking zone where?
I'd like to answer that. I speak as a former bus driver in essence. Use Foster Road as the example. A student from Foster Road could very easily walk to Founder's. But the same bus that delivers at Founders also delivers the elementary. We're committed for a bus to go down there irregardless.
I think it's a good observation, Paula, and I just to piggyback on David, we don't make kids walk, but I I do think that we should, in the spirit of our health and wellness, that we should encourage kids to walk and ride bicycles.
Junction, they don't want to school.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not in policy. We've talked about that notion of drawing the circle around, you know, but you know, that that invites, you know, some pretty
We also don't have a grossly elaborate sidewalk network. But we have, the board has talked for maybe fifteen years about a walking policy. But my example of the Foster Road, I present that every time on account of the elementary students that live on Foster Road.
But Dave, wouldn't it be possible for those students to wait at the end of Foster Road? Rather than the bus having to go down to get that?
Well, that may be the, that may be the the result, as a matter of fact, that I think that Mark was alluding to, that where kids in the past have been dropped off at their mailbox, it could very well be that, you know, this is the new stop for you. It's the end of Foster Road and that is the stop. And that, I think, would be a reasonable
I just think we have this conversation every year about the high cost of transportation and I know how you feel about it, Dave, and I can certainly appreciate that. But when I hear that there's a first grader who's on the bus for an hour and twenty minutes, and yet we have buses who are taking kids who live within walking distance of that school, of this school, it seems sort of ridiculous to me. I just feel like this is something we need to consider doing.
I'd like to talk to that. The hour and twenty minutes might take into account the bus that, at least in history, made the rounds around well, one round, Sleepy Hollow Road down into Jericho and up to Sawmill Road. That's a long route. The one that I used to drive was one twenty eight, which includes Petengill, Hanley, Osgood, Cotella. And I think there's another one in there. That road is limited by route miles and you're not going to send two buses up there.
Well, and I I think, Karen, the point's well taken in that we'll need to figure out if there are things that make more sense and the ideals, it would not be the ideal any stretch that any child should be on the bus or in transit for an hour and twenty minutes. That's just given our community is, it's a bummer. I mean, that that but there are far reaching parts of our community as well and having to stop at every stop and those homes that are as close as those who might choose to walk or at least come to a communal stop, especially for the middle school buses, just would make a lot more sense. And that's what I thought I was understanding Mark say, that that will be reevaluated, the number of bus stops. The fact that our sidewalks aren't maintained in the same way the junctions are might make it harder to have there be that walking happening for kids who are even in what seems like the obvious walking distance, you know, to you and I, or the kids that we see biking or walking in the good weather are probably not doing that. And frankly, those buses are still driving right by them as as they're walking if it's not great weather. So I think where it's spoken to in policy is more around the notion of student safety and it's not specific to things like a policy around a loop of where it would be well within our ability to, from a procedural standpoint, set boundaries that make sense or bus stops that make sense on a on a routing system that is looking at using three fewer buses and really trying to make it the best experience it can be. And I know that that's where I understand this focus is going to be and it probably will mean there will be bus stop changes.
Yeah, the hard thing about it is it it there's there's winners and losers to pick, quite simply. And, you know, I think the the stronger your policy and the stronger the procedures sort of like take the emotion out of it. But that's hard when you've been doing it a certain way for a long time. So as we proceed, we'll go about cautiously and also with good communication, we'll probably have a something on our website that's communicating regularly in terms of the progress we're making and to avoid the, here's your schedule for the refrigerator a week before school, you know, we'll need to be out in front of it.
And I know where we have the high school schedule starting sort of smack in the middle of all of our schedules, that really is a challenge. Even, you know, my eighth grader had his right in a persuasive essay or was at some point on flipping the schedule because that all the evidence and research indicates kids should start later and these guys should be earlier. And and the reality is we're working around an eight o'clock start at the high school and we have to get our kids there too. So it's, that is a challenge that is sort of outside of what we can do. We have to work around that because we can't have high school kids arrive late. So we couldn't just flip the younger kids to seven thirty and us to the, you know, the older kids to eight thirty without having the younger kids riding the bus with high school kids, which, you know, I can understand to be, despite the fact that I have two high school kids. I could see where not everybody wants their kids riding with high school kids who have younger kids, totally get it. And so, you know, there are so many things that aren't within our ability to control, but that is one of those things that sits right in the middle of what might otherwise seem logical to move things around and just makes it that much harder. Sorry.
I just, it's refreshing to hear that there's talk about doing bus stops. I live in Pinewood and it is that I can see your driveway and you'll see the bus stops here, the bus stops there. So I think getting kids together is a great idea, just for their social interactions as well in the morning. And then when when the time comes to talk about, if there is going to be the time change, I think that my, the thing that kind of alarms me is how this would impact children at the end of the day, when they come home off the bus, if it's four thirty now instead of four o'clock and extracurricular activities, you know, we want kids to do other things besides just school and how that impacts homework. I think, you know, the whole, is there a unified homework policy coming down the pike that things along those lines, just I know my child, she's nine years old and if she has homework and swim, she's doing a good good job of negotiating all of that. But if you take a half an hour out of that time for her, it's really going to upset her cart. So how that will all shake out for the end of the day, you know, in family time.
Yeah.
Lot to consider.
A lot of considerations and and I think I feel reassured that we can act or provide guidance on the budget piece of it. And that I think Mark has heard us and the folks who've communicated either via Facebook or email, that any other bigger change to schedule that would impact two thirds of our students and families requires a a bigger engagement and conversation and, you know, probably fairly compelling, you know, support for that in a way that could be well communicated and people could say, oh, I could see that working or it makes sense, or maybe in the face of all the challenges or the domino effects that you mentioned, we don't have enough of that yet to know whether or not we can do better than what we're doing right this second with three fewer buses and better routing systems. And so I am understanding that that will take some time and study and and more thorough engagement than whether we reduce those three buses, we're going to reduce those three buses regardless. And it fits, you know, we can act on the budget with that much information and with the assurance that this other piece of it is not something that's going to be moved on unilaterally. And that's what I'm hearing you say, Mark, right?
Another concern that I have is if we try to group stops too much, then it becomes inconvenient for parents so that they have to drive to the bus stop. They might decide it's just as easy to drive the student to the school. And quite honestly, I think that we have enough traffic around the school as it is now.
That delicate balance. I'm looking forward to this magical software doing its thing and anticipating all of that part, too.
Well, I've learned in my years of experience at school calendars and bus schedules, it people pretty exciting. This is not bus routing three point O, guys. Trying to think out of the box, that's it.
You know, when you think out of the box, okay, instead of having that that thirty minute program before school, can you do that thirty minute program after school? You know, just looking at trying to think of other things that maybe if they're sitting around waiting, let's have them do the program then versus affecting the morning, who knows? But, yeah.
Conversations are good.
Okay.
Yeah. I think if we're good on transportation, we could move along to the capital reserve. And I think Mark and Roger heard from us last time around that we felt as though that eighty thousand for the fire alarm and the intercom system should go as an anticipated expense in our operating budget. If we are, they've shared information with us on both scenarios still. And I think we want to probably give you some final guidance on where we want that expense. And then I think also some guidance on where we stand on the amount we're separately asking for for the capital reserve. Go.
Those are the two questions, thanks.
Those are, is that, am I getting it? Did I get that right?
But, you know, it goes back to, you know, I just feel like it's a it's a planned budget. We know we're going to do it. And the way I also look at it on the flip side is if we put it into capital reserve, technically, we're just doing an eighty thousand expense with only forty five thousand in capital reserve. It's the way my mind thinks of it. And that's why I think, you know, I know it would, could potentially take eighty thousand dollars out of our budget. But then you look at those items that are two hundred plus thousand on our list. And if we're only putting forty five thousand a year, I mean, how much can you save toward those bigger item budgets? A bigger budget item. So that's where my thinking really is.
I I agree with Rachel, as I said last time. And if we don't do the eighty in the budget, then I think our capital reserve needs to be two hundred.
Right.
I think that eighty, I think that one twenty five, the eighty and all our other stuff all need to be here. It's just a matter of where does the eighty go? And I agree with Rachel, I think Rachel should go in the annual budget as opposed to the reserve. If everybody else were opposed and said, no, it's got to get to the, okay. But I think it's got to, so I I don't think we can reduce from roughly up to two hundred and five towards capital, whether it's split, maybe even it's over.
Because I remember our our projected projects were like in the million dollar range still, right?
One point eight.
One point eight, yeah.
Over ten years.
Right.
So if we do two hundred right now, we're on pace.
But just that, I think a lot of us kind of have that hiccup effect of once you start hitting two hundred plus.
Yeah, I I would be concerned at two hundred for the capital reserve that we wouldn't get the support. But I anybody else thoughts?
I, yeah, I I agree. I think it needs to be in the annual budget, just seems to make the most sense.
Pass for this conversation.
Pass.
I think you already know my ideas.
Um, well, and I can absolutely go either way. I think it, on its face, is a capital investment. So like, you know, if it were a discretionary choice, then it would belong even not in a shell game mode, but in a, okay, it if we could do this in the next five years or in the next two years, I would say it's a capital investment and it should go come out of the capital reserve and we should be asking for the money to support the capital reserve because its balance is way too low for what we have on the horizon for work that needs to get done. But in that it must be done, I feel like it needs to exist probably in our operating budget and and a hundred and twenty five sounds like a reasonable request, you know? I don't know if you know, dropping it to a hundred or something doesn't all of a sudden drop us below some magical target increase that we we have a lot on our list. And we've managed to with things like the security system, which, you know, we were able to do because we had that there. And right now with our little balance, we wouldn't be in a position to really do too terribly much if things were to come up.
Well, I think of it as a one twenty five this year, if we can do, you know, just thinking out to next year, if we do another one twenty five, potentially you can knock one of those big items off the list and then continue to build to start knocking off those big guys, which is really what I envision that capital reserve budget being needed for those big items as they come along.
And then when our debt payment drops by three hundred thousand in two years or whatever, three years, two years, whatever that is, I think that we can, actually, I really liked the idea of, I think, in the very first budget that you showed us, the idea of well, our our cap, our debt is dropping by this much, so let's move that, I really like that idea. Okay, it's a little more than we want to do right now, but I think it's a great idea. And so I think, yeah, if we do, if we kind of get in this one twenty five trend for two more years or so and then take the debt reduction and slide it over, I think I think we'll be in a good trajectory.
And when we think about it as a percent of the budget we're requesting, it's quite small. Frankly, we're not asking for well, one percent of our budget to be used as capital reserve. I mean, it's probably, yeah, it's something a little more than half, a little less than one. And not that that would be a bad thing, but I don't think we're really in a position to be asking for that. That might be the you know, right long thing term thing to do. It's just not something that we can probably bear in this environment. So I am hearing that we are wanting that eighty thousand in the operating budget and that we are comfortable putting our separate article, a hundred and twenty five thousand for the capital reserve.
I think that another discussion that we should have is what is the maximum amount that we should have into a capital reserve fund?
How big should the balance of it be?
How big should the balance be? That doesn't have to take place now. But
I don't think we're at risk of it being too big right now. That I'm pretty sure of.
But it is a good guideline to have in our minds, that, oh, we we don't ever want this to be more than half a million dollars.
I I'm wondering, I wouldn't be surprised if there isn't some guidance somewhere on what is prudent to do for public school or for I remember doing this, I think, actually with Saxon Hill as we talked about a reserve fund and there was a recommended sort of for nonprofits, you know, what is a prudent capital reserve balance or requirement to have as a percent of your operating budget is what I recall it being sort of stated as, and it was years ago that I researched that when we put it in at Saxon Hill. So that might be something we could ask Roger to, you know, maybe do a little digging and see if there's some you know, collective wisdom on what would be recommended.
I didn't find that collective wisdom when I researched starting the reserve in the first place, but I can look further.
I bet, even, there might just be averages that are around, I mean, Grant Geisler might, they've been doing this longer than we have with their capital reserve, I think. They have that separate article that or or however they run it, I think is a separate article of up to one percent of the budget. And I just didn't there might be some
I if I recall correctly, my understanding is that they that they go, pretty much go ahead and and do projects with the with the money that they are putting in the reserve.
So they don't build up a significant balance?
But I I can I can ask.
Well, and we've certainly been in that position where as we've been investing in it, we've also been knocking things off our project list, which is why our reserve is, you know, somewhat uncomfortably low, I think, for all of us now. As we really couldn't knock off almost anything with what we have as a balance right now. We would have run out of pencils, we could probably take care of it now.
If we operated without a capital reserve.
I know. But I think we've thankfully been in a lot more strategic position about how we're looking to plan for a few years, even though you can't put money in savings, you can plan for a few years ahead with budgeting. And that's been like for me, a lot more comfortable to look at a single year's budget, knowing that there's a plan for more years than that.
Well, thanks for that direction.
Thank you, guys.
It'll eliminate one of the scenarios on the slide or two of them.
Yeah, that's right, we can
Shorter presentation next month.
There we go.
It's always good to clarify because I know I I have to keep stopping myself to think about, okay, so it's, you know, what are the difference between the percentages, like the, what the tax increases versus, and I understand enough where I, but sometimes I stop to stop and think, and I think sometimes that might just come across so quickly. We're having to go back and forth.
Again, we've had to stop, we've had the chance to stop and think about it five times. Someone's sitting there for the first time, you go, what?
Exactly where I was going back like, okay, wait a second, why is that that versus that? And, oh, yeah, wait a second, that's using
And if you guys have, I don't know if this is helpful to you, you gentlemen, but if we look back at our, the last couple rounds of presentations, which you can find under the financial services section of our website, I did shoot Lauren a message to see if we could have like a budget tab on the homepage. Because it took me a little bit of time to find it. So if we had a budget tab on the homepage where we could put up all the presentations, regardless, we we can find them because we know to look under the financial section. If you guys have favorite slides that you're like, these definitely need to be in there, it might be helpful for Mark and Roger. it might be helpful for Mark and Roger if we, um, you know, shoot them that email and, and just say, these are among our favorites or, you know, these were most illuminating in your thinking from round one or something. Um, and I'm sure that they can take that guidance and put together something fabulous.
You could have that to us by Thursday morning.
That, thank you, Roger, thank you. That's a, that's a perfect thought. So anybody with strong feelings about things they definitely want to see, um, let's share it with Roger and Mark. And can copy me or, rather than funneling it through me, maybe just if we, um, send it to those guys and copy each other so we're not sending it three times or whatever, that'd be fun. Or copy me and I'll try and not have us send things.
That, or improvements that you might suggest in any of your, on any of the slides that you like, would like to tweak.
Awesome, thank you. So I think we are on, um, I don't know that we had real action that we needed to vote on for this because it's not really actionable, right, Mark? I think we're now.
It's good direction.
Yeah, perfect. So we are on to compensation and benefits. And before we worry that we're gonna be here till ten o'clock, I want to, um, let you guys know that we're gonna, um, push out four point six governance investment. We had an illness in our team. And so we are gonna push that after the following week. It'll be after the budget presentation. So Cashel is still on it, but not, not for this week. So compensation and benefits.
You gonna, you gonna stick around?
Well, sure, but as we've discussed, two point seven is fascinating.
It is pretty fascinating. Once again, I would acknowledge the hard work of my, my teammate Roger, who although it may be dense and dry for some, it is important that the board understand the numbers. Uh, it really is your work. I clearly appreciate the support you've given to the vision in Essex Town and, and the, the presentations that preceded tonight. I think that you really understand that the investment you're making is an important one. But Roger, thanks for all your, your work. He works right to, right to the last minute to get the slides done well. And, um, uh, he makes me look good all the time, so, uh, thank you. Two point seven, um, I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly, um, because there are some highlights over last year. The first point, the first thing I want to point out is that there is an era. If you didn't catch it, um, uh, it's under, um, I, I shouldn't change my own compensation and benefits. That's against the policy, which is probably a good policy. I am at the end of a, a three-year contract. I signed a contract in, in July of two thousand twelve and it sunsets in June of two thousand fifteen. So what it says here is that it goes from two thousand fifteen to July of two thousand fifteen. So that should be July of two thousand twelve was the beginning of the contract.
It's a really short contract.
Wicked short contract.
We were making sure, we liked it for that month.
The sun rose and the sun set. But that, that's an adjustment. I apologize for that, that era. But just, um, uh, flipping, um, through again, there wasn't, there were no changes to that, to that section. That just identifies that I've had a signed, uh, contract's been consummated by the board. The next, um, article talks about not guaranteeing any permanent employment and identified here are the contractual agreements that we have with, um, with non-union support staff, administrative staff. And that the only exception to, um, the rule really that's noteworthy is Wendy Cobb, the principal here and it founders is, is on a one-year contract and that was by design, which is customary when you have a, a new leader in place to make sure that, um, you know, it's the right match for, for that person and for the organization. I also went on to, to, um, identify that the non-union support staff has a written, um, conditions and agreement that goes through two thousand seventeen, which we successfully came to consensus on last spring.
Can I just, so basically what it looks like is all three principals have contracts ending this year, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And so is that typical or is that something that we ever give thought to? Maybe not having all three principals ending on the same contract cycle?
Yeah, I haven't, now, it's a good observation, a good question. It just happens to be the way it is. I mean, I can think about how I might want to structure that differently. You know, the, the important part of that, I think it's a commitment of making two years to our leadership so that they're, they have security in the fact that they're, they're employed for two years. Barring any, anything that happens that would affect that, uh, cycle. But I can think about how I might want to structure that, but it's pretty much been, it, actually, it was different up until last year, I believe. Because we had a couple people, I had people on single-year contracts.
And I didn't know if that or three-year contracts, you know, if depend, I, you know, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think one to two was maximum, yeah.
You know, having them all in the same cycle. Hopefully, we never would be in a situation where we'd be searching for even two of the three at the same time.
In history, everyone was on a, uh, one-year contract. And then, uh, when a certain event took place, uh, they wanted protection, so we gave them all the year, but that was the first time.
The other thing mentioned here, of course, in, in your red print is that the decision, uh, that was made to have, uh, the director of business and finance move from a hundred percent to an eighty-five percent position, that's noted. On the following page, uh, that, that next article talks about, um, establishing change compensation and benefits that deviate materially from our geographic region. And what we do, um, at the state level through, um, the VSA, Vermont Superintendent Association, uh, for one, but also being in touch with other human resource providers in each school district is to make sure that, that our contracts are commensurate and competitive with those, um, in outlined areas. So that's another body of work that we, um, that we do. Um, and I believe that we've got, um, contracts in place that, that support that, that notion. I also wanted to include this year, um, the next article is not to over commit our, our fina, financial obligations to make sure that, you know, I'm, I'm projecting revenues, um, thoughtfully and it has something that's sustainable over time. So that the preschool work, uh, was, it was a big body of work, starting with some soft money through some foundations that allowed us to plant the seed several years ago. And we have strategically used those resources and now moved to Act one sixty-six, which is universal access. But we've also, um, created an ADM base that was not present before, which is now, you know, generating more money from, you know, from, uh, ADM. So that's, that's a good thing, um, and I thought that that was noteworthy. On page four, um, the article speaks to establishing or changing benefits, not to cause unpredictable or inequitable situations. Roger made the point in this, in this piece of evidence that strategically we have built into the budget the obligation of twelve point six four percent, uh, teachers who are, um, being funded in part or in whole by title grants and IDAB. So that was another change to, to this past year. Also mentioning that we are currently, um, and so I found the question interesting tonight, but, um, outline the benefits, um, in the master agreement with two associations there, they're clearly spelled out.
A quick question, Tepi, you, you said, uh, now, I think I heard you say twelve point six four.
Did I say that too quickly?
Yeah, twelve point eight four.
I just want to make sure, I, I don't think that.
Eight four, yep.
Okay.
Yep, I didn't change anything.
Okay, but I, I, I mean, it's, it's, I just thought, well, let's make sure that e, e, either the eight fours are typo and you got it, said it right, or I just want to make sure that that.
Yeah, thanks, good, good call. The, the most important paragraph at the end, of course, is, is something that's signed by Roger George, which states that, um, he attests that I have not altered or asked to be altered his, my salary or benefits. And again, in all, not trying to be silly, but I think it's important that, that you know that it's a transparent, uh, operation that we have and, and Roger provides that type of oversight for me.
Thanks, Roger.
That's why you decided to sit here for this.
He doesn't make me nervous at all. So, um, that is a brief review and I'll, any questions for myself or Roger, I'd be glad to take those.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think this is one of our most important, but also one of our most straightforward policies. I think if you weren't in compliance, that would be a significant concern. I'd be very surprised if you weren't.
Probably be on the other side of the mountain. And not here with you tonight.
So, you know, I, I, I almost feel remiss in something as important as this to say, no comment, looks great, but no comment, looks great. I mean, I would expect it to look great.
Well, thanks, Dan. I, I, you know, I, we take pride in the work we do in making sure that our, our employees are treated fairly and, uh, and you're right, it is an important policy. And I really believe that the non-union support staff contracts, support staff contract, teachers contract, administrative contracts, and the oversight that's provided, um, of those is, is, is very well done here. And, um, I think, uh, there's a number, number of indicators that support that claim.
Do anybody have any other questions or comments? I will just say, I concur and I also appreciate you guys pointing out the places where there are some impact by things that the state has sort of imposed on us. And, um, that's real evidence to, you know, things that we need to be responsive to that we actually don't have any control over, but impact our planning. So I, not that we didn't think you were paying attention to it, I knew you had it. But it's, I think it's important to state it, so thank you. I will, if no other questions, um, take a motion to accept the monitoring report. Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye, passes five zero, thank you, gentlemen, very much.
For the feedback.
And, Margaret, I can also, a little other piece of positive feedback, not about this one specifically, but I love the way you highlight in red.
Oh, good.
It really helps.
It is really helpful.
Otherwise, like, oh my god, what's different?
Yeah. Thanks, Dan. I just, when you get to the point of talking about, you know, next versions of the budget, just as an aside, comment made by a person in the audience tonight in terms of what have the iterations? What's the, what does that look like? I, I'll need some help thinking about that because in some ways I think we've done that. But if we need to be clear about what one version looked like next to the next, then, you know, your feedback's gonna be important.
Or even, um, even what the one, what the rollover budget is compared to what we've ended with.
That's the biggest transition.
That's good, I mean, that will capture it all rather than what's changed each one. And that would confuse, I think it would confuse me.
That transition is clear, isn't it?
It is, but I think what hasn't happened in the last two rounds, when we've had a couple people come, is that very first presentation that the rollover was one piece, but draft one really looked at our expense side with some rationale to it. And it also set the stage for the, the type of thinking you do as you're going about the planning, as it aligns with our strategic plan. And, um, it was, there was more color in that, but then there was also a little more expansion on the thinking around, um, the coaches and special ed and, you know, I, I think that's the piece that is going to catch people up, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, saying, here's where we started with the rollover budget and that richness. And here's step two and three and four and five, no. Here's where we started and here's where we finish.
Where we are, and here's why, exactly, the why, that's terrific. And so we bounced that little piece ahead of us being able to do the final reading and approval of the revised state policies. So, um, I think we can take these as a slate mark, can't we?
Yes, we can.
And, um, unless there are any, um, changes, I would take a motion to accept these state required policies as revised. Anyone? Did I do that right, David?
Yeah, I think the minister should, should actually include the policies, Kimberly.
Do you see that on the agenda? Yeah.
Yeah. I also, um, I'm sorry.
No, go.
I'm, I'm out of, out of order.
Yes, I was very offended.
But we want to redo, I know, we, we have to redo your policies books because we have these funny little numbers that are associated with each policy, but we, you know, we've not been aligned with that for many moons. So I, um, I purposely didn't want to put them here because it just would have confused things, but we will have a number for these at some point.
Thank you.
Did, Mark, did you mean that they all need to be listed in the motion or just in the?
I think in the minutes. I think, you know, making a motion that the, yeah, policies as presented, revised policies, yeah.
To third reading and adoption.
And adoption.
Sounds like David just made it. Did you make that motion, David?
It sounds like I did.
Excellent, I'd love to second David.
Thank you very much.
I think maybe for, for viewers at home, um, you know, maybe, you know, maybe reading those would be appropriate.
Do you want to read through them, David? Do you have them up on the agenda?
I think Dan would like to do it because he's seconded the motion.
Okay, do you have it, Dan? Do you want me to read it?
Let me jump to the agenda, sorry.
Just the list of them?
Yeah.
The, the ones that we were actually doing.
I've got it.
You've got it?
There they are. Um, second reading for the revised state policies regarding the participation of home study students, the Health and Insurance Portability and Accountably, Accountability Act compliance. Third is volunteer and work-study students. Fourth policy is drug and alcohol policy. Fifth policy is tobacco prohibition. And the sixth policy is transportation apropos for tonight's conversation. Those are the six that we are revising.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Or you could flip flop it.
I wouldn't want to steal Dave's thunder.
Okay, there we go. Any discussion? All right, then, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting those six policies read by Dan, um, signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. All those opposed, passes five zero, thank you very much, you guys. That was on our list for the summer.
Is that a board goal?
That was a goal, guys. It's not complete, but that's fairly substantial. We, we brought six required policies, um, current. So that, um, is a good body of work, you guys, thank you.
Well, thank you to Cashel.
Yeah, thank you very much, Cashel. Able to move it. We did our little chart and breakdown at the beginning, but it was just hard to move it, so thank you very much. All right, so I know that we received, just for Mark's sake, and this is jumping backwards just a second, two point seven compensation and benefits. We received the evaluation form from Lorna. It didn't come in the packet, it came via email earlier. So just if, while we're looking for our meeting, um, s, our meeting evaluation form, if you can look back for an email from Lorna, um, that I think included the two point seven evaluation form and do both of those when we go home, then, um, I think we've spoken about the design for the budget presentation. Do you not see it?
I don't see it, but.
If I find it, I will forward it. If not, I will ask Lorna to send it out to everybody.
Oh, here, it came, it didn't come into our email boxes from, it doesn't say Lorna. How do you pronounce her last name?
Micho.
I would not have said that.
She'll let you know if she's been this pronounced.
It just comes as L, Micho.
Okay, there we go.
So it's, um, it came on January fourteenth. Essex Town School District in all capitals is the title.
So if we can find that, that would be terrific. If, um, you can't find it, let me know and we'll forward it. But if we can do both that and the board evaluation of the meeting, thank you, Cashel, for shooting that out to all of us because nothing like seeing a bright email you've not responded to to get you to do the evaluation, so thank you. We have the meeting tomorrow night. Just by a show of hands, who is able to attend tomorrow night?
I think a part of it.
That's terrific. Okay, um, that's terrific, whomever can be there, great. You know, we didn't have any say in the scheduling of it and, um, we're not completely clear exactly what big role we may have. We're not, we're not organizing or delivering it. We're there in support of, um, this informational session. But I don't want to suggest that if you have to, you know, break your neck to get there, that, um, so it, it's a little different than us planning our own meeting and, and.
But it's been legally warned.
It has been warned and we're warned, if three of us should attend, it's okay. So terrific, everybody who can come, please do, and those who can't, um, it's understood. Future agenda items, we will just move this four point, uh, six forward. And then I think that that was it because we had actually moved two point seven up and four point six up. So we're just moving it back and we have the budget presentation next week.
So just to, to, um, check my understanding, you will, will you be taking a look at the, what you saw tonight for slides and actually going back to when we began this and, and taking those slides you think have the most pop? And putting them into one presentation?
So what we were gonna do, and, and I'm actually, we were gonna, um, I think you were. So what we were going to do, and, and I'm actually, we were going to, um, I think you were fixing something over there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay, we were, was telling Roger that we would take a look at those, and by Thursday morning, get to him our favorite slides from earlier things. And in the absence of that, choose those which seem like they bring together the greatest presentation. I think because this is still our full board considering it, and we haven't approved it, I prefer for you guys to deliver it, and then from that, when we are delivering the budget presentation to the community before the vote, that will be my job, or whomever else's job wants to take it. But the board presenting the budget, 'cause at this point, we haven't approved a final budget, so if you are...
So do you want to, you want to cap it at a dozen, I mean, slide, you know how long, it's usually thirty, thirty, thirty-five minutes? You know, more is not necessarily better. Um, we try to design it so that you're seeing the same theme come out a number of different times. But do you have a sense of, of number of slides? How much story or, or narrative do you want versus straight up? I mean, or do you just want us to design that and play around with it?
I think we have to go a little bit back to, like, the class size stuff, and some of that stuff that's going to be of interest if people show. And, um, and so, maybe thirty or forty, I don't know how long these have taken in the past.
I feel like thirty's, like, the ideal target.
Okay, that's true for that.
Knowing that we'd probably...
So you're probably looking at a dozen to fifteen slides to, to bring it in at thirty minutes, which is fine.
And I realize this says a complete contradiction, but I think the fewer numbers on a slide, the better.
Yeah.
You know, those nice big columns?
Right.
Don't work well in a, in a conversational presentation.
And I think...
As crucial as they are for us to be able to look at them all, that's not what I think...
We could, we could, as, you know, I think any of us could stand up and present it, but I guess it'll be important is to be clear about what your role, if, if, and when people show up and they have questions, I think the more you can answer those as a board, the better it is than myself for the Director of Business Finance. We're always there to support it, but I think we've gone, hopefully, through it enough that you've got a... I don't think you're going to hear numbers about, I don't think you're going to have questions about numbers, it's going to be more of the story. So I would defer to you, and if there's a need to sort of enhance what you've said, I'm always there. But, uh, this is the board's meeting, so hopefully you feel comfortable with that.
No, I think that that makes perfect sense, and, um, I would agree on the numbers piece. The, uh, obviously, though, it's a budget presentation, there'll need to be some. And, um, the big points, like the average over five years, and, and those things are big, and how it's going to impact taxes and those increases. That one slide that we had used in the past, which I think actually has been modeled for others when it was especially last year, breaking down that part of the budget, which we had impact on, and that which we didn't, is, tells less of a story this year, so that slide can be a bit confusing.
Yeah.
And it was incredibly necessary last year, and is probably not necessary this year.
Agreed.
So, um, you know, otherwise, I'm not sure that I would feel prepared to give you specific guidance right now, but if by Thursday, we, like, tell you, definitely want to make sure you hit these things.
And if it's a slide that we can embellish, or the slide that we don't have, then by all means.
Well, and you guys, I would imagine, have, I, what you might anticipate, and I, I remember having done in years past, was that, um, the body has the majority of the information. And then those slides that you might want to jump to if people ask more detailed, but, you know, they're well laid out in one of these number-laden slides. I, I usually put those after the end, and I know where to go to them, and you guys have done that before too, where you're like, okay, we can expand on this, and here it is. So you may just want to have them all exist in one place if there are some of those slides. And so, I think that that's...
Do you want to assume that we're going to set the budget next week?
I think we should look for approval.
Yeah.
That's my impression, thank you.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you all very much, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it, we... Adjourn our meeting at, at eight fifty-eight.
Oh, second. Cashel, did you second?
I think we should have a...
Cashel seconded, all those in favor, aye.